At this time, we will have a report out of closed session.
No action was taken.
Thank you, Mr. Islam. May I have a motion to adjourn closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Closed session is adjourned at 7:20. Now, welcome to the open session of the Rialto Unified School District reconvened at 7:20 PM. We have a full board meeting tonight, but first let's have Edward Ortiz. Where's Edward? Join a junior from Rialto High School. He's going to lead us in the pledge.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Please be seated.
Thank you, Edward. Next is adoption of agenda. May we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Are there any pulls? All in favor? We will start with our student board member. How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, board members.
Aye.
The agenda has been adopted. Thank you. Next, we will move into presentations. We will start tonight with high school DSAC students' presentations. And we will have Marisol be in charge. So take it away, Marisol.
Good evening, everyone. Today, we will begin with Eisenhower High School. By speaking for Eisenhower would be Janay Wilson.
Good evening, honorable board members, interim superintendent, Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. I'm Janay Wilson, ASB president at Eisenhower High School. We're currently working on many new and exciting events, including homecoming, a murder mystery, and at the end of the year, we plan to have an Ike Olympics. Besides all that ASB is planning, our goal this year is to continue and expand upon the change that began in the previous school year. This year, we are focusing on being a tool to our campus by helping the different clubs and sports as much as we can. We're working toward accomplishing this goal by beginning a council, which will include captains of sports, presidents of clubs, and coaches and advisors. This council will be used to help us come together the first Tuesday of every month and give each fundraiser, give each other fundraiser activity ideas. And we'll also inform each other about the next big event or game we each have coming up so that we're able to further support each other. Oh, and then that'll like, hopefully that'll deepen the unity at Eisenhower because it's going good right now, but can never be too good. And then the culture of the campus is changing for the better because the students were changing. And then we're promoting the idea that leadership is an action, not a position, and encouraging every student to become a leader in their own way because each of us has different qualities and that together it'll just make us stronger. Like diversity is the key to success. And then we hope that each student realizes that nobody at Ike is alone. There are plenty of eagles to soar with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker will be Edward Ortiz from Rialto High School.
Good evening, honorable Board of Education, interim superintendent, Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. My name is Edward Ortiz, ASB ambassador from Rialto High School, and I'm here to tell you all about the great things happening on our campus. I don't know if any of you have heard, but Rialto High School's spirit is at an all-time high. Our first pep rally this school year was a complete success. With the addition of a brand-new spirit group by the name of Team Torta and a student section at our home football games, night pride has never been better. Last night, our Lady Knights volleyball team grabbed a hold of a broom and swept Grand Terrace, winning all three of their games. We are so proud of you, Lady Knights. Now that we've taken their sweat and tears, we're also asking for their blood. That's right, Rialto High School will be having its first blood drive of the year, all day on September 19th in the Great Hall. Remember, one donation of blood can save up to three lives, so I personally invite you all to be a part of this life-saving event. Now, for the moment that students all over campus have been waiting for, homecoming is right around the corner. Our theme is Disney's Remember the Magic, and the dance is scheduled for Saturday, October 18th. Make sure to jot this date down for your chance to see how the Rialto Knights get down. I thank you all for your time and look forward to seeing you all at Rialto soon.
Thank you, Edward.
Our final speaker is Karen Bustamante from Carter High.
Good evening, honorable board members, interim superintendent, Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. My name is Karen Bustamante. I'm the student representative at Carter High School. These past two months have been a great start at Carter High, and this year, we hope to have everyone involved in every sports events, club, clubs, and other great things, events in our school. We just had our first blood drive of the year, September 5th, and it was a very great success. About 300 students donated blood. Our homecoming is approaching fast this year. This year, it'll be on October 4th from 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM. The theme is Mardi Gras. We will also be having our first pep rally on October 31st, and our theme is superheroes. As you can see, it's on Halloween. This year, we really hope to reach out to every student on our campus as to those students who don't join clubs or sports. Thank you for your time.
And that will be it for our speakers tonight.
Thank you, Board Member Marisol. Thank you. Next, we will go to public comments, item C on our agenda. Number one, comments from the floor. At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item that is not on the agenda will be granted three minutes to do so. Mr. Islam, do you have any cards?
None.
None? Wow. Very good. Number two, comments on agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on an item that is on the agenda will be granted three minutes. Are there any?
None.
None. Thank you so much. We will move to item D, public hearing. Open public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on an item on the public hearing agenda will be granted three minutes. And there is one item, public textbook and instructional materials programs, which is reference D 1.1. Hearing none, may I have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Kelly. Thank you, Mrs. O'Kelly. Vote by board members, all in favor?
Aye.
And that time is 7:20. It was a unanimous decision. Public hearing closed at 7:28. Consent calendar items. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by Board of Education members or the interim superintendent for individual action. May I have a motion to approve consent items, reference E through J?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Preferential vote by our student board members?
Aye.
Board members?
Aye.
Oh, I had some pulls.
You did have a pull. Alright, Mrs. O'Kelly.
H9, 11, and 12.
H9.
Okay.
Alright.
First, I'd like to know what exactly is the proposed path of travel project at Carter High School?
Dr. Zeus, can you answer that, please?
What number is that?
It's a business item. Yeah.
What's?
I should have my director. Yes, could you please? They're probably in the other room. Do you mind if we go to the next item?
Alright, item 10.
No, 11. Well, I just, I have a question. I see in here in several places that they're saying these particular companies have done a lot of work for the district over the years. What I want to know is, are we soliciting bids for all of these projects or simply using companies that we have before? Because how are we sure that we're getting the best price and the best quality if we are not requesting bids?
We do have a pool, a selected pool of the architect for different projects approved by the board. We've gone through that approval process.
Right.
Through the RFP process, and we're pulling those ready for the projects, so we went through the selection process, yes.
So you only use the people in the pool? You don't?
Yes, you're correct.
Is that forever, or at some point do you revisit the pool?
I think, given the fact that it's been probably at least before Ms. O'Kelly got elected on this board, certain pools of contractors were selected and approved by the board. It'd probably only be fair to update that pool every, at least every year or two.
Yes, we can do that. So we, sometimes we establish a pool to speed up or waiting for the funding or the decision. So it's kind of a preparations, planning and preparation. So I hear.
I think it's important.
It's a good idea to.
Because sometimes they get too comfortable and.
I agree.
We're not getting the best we can get.
It's the time, timing of decisions and moving forward. I agree with you. So we will move forward with updating the list. I agree to the list probably.
You guys can make recommendations.
Yes.
So do we want to keep this one this time and?
Yes.
No, we can go ahead and.
Go ahead with this one.
But it's, I think we need to.
Update the.
Update.
If I may clear these items aboard, if you don't mind. This is our PTC. It's affecting our community, the parking.
Right.
And it's been that way for many years. As I assess the conditions, our community homeowners are suffering when we conduct a business that no parking and we park on the street.
I know.
So this is just.
I totally understand why we're doing it. I just had the question about.
She didn't understand why the same companies were always being selected.
You're correct. So we're going to explore updating that list, yes.
Okay.
Good suggestion, Mrs. O'Kelly.
If I can.
Ms. Foot is here on the path of travel, if you want to ask her.
Who?
Ms. Foot is.
If I could make the request.
Yeah, hold on just.
Oh, that was the other, the other.
Just, hold on a minute, hold on. Mr. Martinez is.
I just wanted to make a request that we open the pool on odd years. So next year, as we go into the process of the end of school, we prep for the following, 16, 17.
Yes, we can do that. Thank you.
That's a good suggestion.
Mrs. Foot, we were, there was a question about item number, what was it?
The, well, it's on H9.
H9.
The path of travel.
Good evening. My name is Christine Foot. I'm the principal at Carter High School. We've been working with Irish Chu this year, and in the past, we've worked with other directors of the different programs over Carter High School with building infrastructure. And Carter High School, as you know, is on the edge of a county area, and many of the sidewalks do not exist. There are no sidewalks. So three years ago, we did finally get some sidewalks, what would be considered on the east side of Linden. And now on the west side of Linden, going north and south, they're looking at adding additional sidewalks because it's safe path of travel. It's very important for the students that walk, that they have a safe place to walk on. Plus, the flooding gets pretty bad when it rains. So the big rains that we had last week, those areas are pretty much insurpassable, not even by car. It comes out large rocks, lots of dirt, lots of debris. So that safe path of travel is very important for our students.
Is the city helping us with that at all, or?
I believe there was a grant three years ago, and the city put in a large portion of the sidewalks. And with that, the county area, which is on the west side, did not contribute to that. But the east side, the city did contribute to it. So for us to complete that path of travel, I believe most of the burden was placed on the district.
So the county is not going to contribute?
I don't believe so. Last time I spoke with Irish Chu, that's something that Mr. Islam could go ahead and look into.
Yeah, the county will not contribute because this is, as Christine is referring to, they did their obligations.
Their portion.
Yes, their portion of their obligation. So.
So it's at the district's expense now?
Yeah, that's correct.
And I believe the area that they are looking at replacing sidewalks is actually on Linden Avenue, a significant area. It doesn't go further into the county property where the homes are. It's mainly Linden Avenue where the kids are walking up and down in front of the school, walking to and from the different markets in that area. I don't believe it's a large area extending into the community. I believe it's just that street in front of Carter to help us with the flooding and the safe passage of travel for the kids.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Um, is there, there has been an effort to get the county to try to, I mean, this is for safety of students, and they belong to the county as much as the district.
It is my understanding, yes. So I can follow through again, yes.
Because now, my second part of this is, why are we using Measure Y funds? You are only supposed to use Measure Y funds for what the voters approved, and the voters did not approve this expenditure. And I'm seeing that in other places in this agenda. And we cannot resort to spending Measure Y funds as a savings account, that money we just put away. It's meant for specific projects, one of which in particular is very near and dear to my heart and keeps getting ignored. So why are we using Measure Y funds?
I will double-check Mrs. O'Kelly because you're right, this project may not qualify for Measure Y fund. So I will, I'll make the corrections, and if you're bored, you're okay.
That one and H12.
We should pull that one then until we.
H12 is also supposed, well, I know, that's classroom additions.
That's, that's okay. The Cali and Casera was in the part of the project, Measure Y fund.
Okay, but this one, I want the sidewalks to be there, obviously, for the safety of the students, but I think the county needs to help out on this.
If I may ask, board, with the modification saying general fund, if you're okay to that, I will request you.
Well, I just, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but weren't part of the Measure Y funds specifically to be used for the needs of the facilities, of the schools?
Not in general, though. There were specific projects targeted.
There were line items.
There was a special, yes. But this is, this one will not, I don't believe is on that list.
Right. And that's, that's the problem. And that's how this money keeps dwindling because it keeps being utilized on things that were not approved by the voters. How this money is spent is up to the voters who voted it in. It's an extra tax on us.
You're correct. So my recommendations, if we, if we're okay to modify the funding source, general fund.
Okay.
And if board is okay, I will.
I think Ms. Ayala had a question, a statement.
I just wanted to make a suggestion. If it's county area, there is a possibility where the community that's affected can apply to become a special district, if it's a county area. And funds can be available for the, for the project. Not only that, they can upgrade streetlights, they can have trees planted, a median, they can do a lot of things. But they first have to form a special district. And I think Mr. Milliken is the person to contact at the county. So it's a suggestion. It was done in the El Rancho Verde area. We went door to door and solicited with the residents if, if we wanted to do this. And the way it worked, we all came together and we agreed and we assessed ourselves more or less a dollar a month, something like that, over the period of a year. So, or the, over the, to increase our taxes is what we did. And we got a beautiful median out of it. And I don't think anybody was dissatisfied. And so a special district is a recommendation for the areas affected.
So as I'm hearing several concerns coming from the board members, then I'm going to change my recommendation. Let's pull these items. I'd like to give you a report, what has been done, what are the options that we can exercise? As Mr., you know, saying this, Mr. Ayala is referring to some of the other options. I'm going to bring your report to you, board, and return back at later date. So let's, my recommendation, let's pull it.
Thank you. I think, does everyone agree that we pull item nine?
Yeah, I'm in favor. I just have a point of order. We, just before Ms. O'Kelly realized she had any pulls, we already voted and approved item E through J.
I'm gonna go back, I'm gonna go back.
Okay.
All right. Any other pulls, Ms. O'Kelly, did you have another?
Not in this section.
Okay, we're gonna rescind that motion and start over. And.
I don't even, I guess I.
Yes, we do, because.
Yeah, we just, just approved them all.
We're going to approve items E through J, eliminating item J nine.
H nine.
H nine. So all in favor of approving items E through J excluding H nine? And this preferential vote by our student board member?
Aye.
Board members?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Montez. Now we will move to discussion action items. Action items will be reenacted in one motion unless members of the Board of Action request special items to be discussed. Approved action items K one through K nine.
And I have some polls.
And, and so do I. Mrs. O'Kelly?
K three, five, and six.
K three.
Don't we have to have a first and a second on it?
Yeah, we'll get a first and a second.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
And I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala. Now we're going to address items three, five, six, and I asked to be exempt from item seven for voting because I wasn't here. Ms. O'Kelly?
On K three, again, why are we using Measure Y funds for things that were not approved by the voters? This one is the agreement with Trane for the Rialto High School Comprehensive Solution Energy Upgrade Product, Project. That was not something that was on the list that went out to the voters to spend Measure Y money on.
Ms. Kelly, this is a Proposition 39 Fund. This is not the Measure Y. This is a governor's energy program.
What number is Measure Y?
Measure Y.
Yeah, that's Proposition 39.
But that's also Prop 29 for the.
Number five?
Fifty-five percent border approval. But this is the governor's energy program, we get special funding.
I had the numbers mixed up because.
It is a special funding for energy program.
And then K five? These things bother me. If I read it correctly, the company was 1.5 million dollars off in their original estimate. The original estimate was 1 million dollars for this project, and now it is 2.5 million, an increase of 1.5 million dollars. And the architect fees that a company have more than doubled as well, from 128,000 to 263,000. You know, it makes me question whether this is a case of bidding the project low to get the job and then adding additional expenses once the job is procured. I do not like the word to ratify, I don't like amend. I think anyone estimating a job should be accurate. There may not be to the penny. It may be a small difference, but a million and a half dollars?
I, I believe, I believe it violates board policy too, to allow, well, that's why it's being brought to vote. We, we've approved the board policy to allow school district designees to approve change orders, believe not to exceed 10%?
Yes, to 10% without.
So, so this is.
This is way over 10%.
Anything over 10% require your actions.
Right, but.
That's why it's on the.
But anything under 10%, you don't need board approval for?
You're correct. You authorize us to proceed with the, with the project, with the 10% change order.
And I have concerns with this because it's not fair to other customer, companies that may have bid the job appropriately. Maybe they were disqualified because their bid was seen as too high, whereas this bid came in really, according to the value they're now putting on the project, ridiculously low. So I'm not comfortable with that myself.
That's a valid point.
Yeah.
It is, it's a valid point.
So, board, let me bring you the detailed report of what constitute this amendment. So I like, my recommendation, let's pull these items.
Okay.
All right.
We will pull item six.
Okay, now that one was K five.
K five, all right.
And then the six is the elementary and middle school sports program. And I'd like to just bring up a few, few points to think about. Yes, the cost was brought down, but it's still an awful lot of money. And several principals have expressed concern that they have not been contacted to see if this is something they want to continue. It does directly affect them, it directly affects their schools, it directly affects their teachers, and many of them do not want to continue it. These are some of the points. It's a huge expense. The principals have concerns that if the sports program is held on minimum days, several teachers will miss department and collaboration meetings because they will be coaching. Several principals have also indicated that in addition to the district expense, individual school sites each have spent approximately 5,000 dollars a year of their own money, very limited money, to support the program with uniforms and trophies and medals and things like that, everything that goes along with it. That money could purchase a lot of badly needed supplies or to provide special events for students or more tutoring. There's a lot of educational things that that money could be used for. In addition, if we continue the program, and they did arrange it this way, but the site principals must not be spending their type, time at all managing the program. So I think they did take care of that. And I just heard that the Edwanda School District discontinued their middle school sports program due to the cost. Their district decided they could not afford to spend that money on a sports program that is not our responsibility to provide. I love sports, I think they're a wonderful part of life, but is that really the best use of 155,000 dollars, which is what it will cost to run it for another year? One person suggested, another option is schools could develop intramural sports at their sites. Students at each site, you know, form teams and they play against each other, you know, for competition. I want to tell the district, I deeply appreciate all of the work that has gone into developing this plan, even though it is less than we paid for the program last year, it is a lot of money. Our responsibility and our purpose is to educate our students. And which is the best use of that money? You know, we have to think about that, but really, first of all, first and foremost, I'd want to know if we can anonymously somehow survey the principals at the elementary and middle schools and see how many of them actually want to keep the sports program? Because if they really don't want to keep it, I think it's very unfair to ask them to keep it because it does cost them money too, to do it the way it was being done.
I'd like to bring Mr. Mark Blind to address all the concerns to Mrs. O'Kelly you have. And furthermore, he may brief you on how we put this proposal together. I want to turn over to Mr. Blind.
Good evening, board, how are you tonight?
Evening.
I, I heard the last part of your concerns with surveying the principals. By putting the coaches and the sports advisors and myself in place, the, the action of the principals isn't needed to take care of the sports program.
Oh, I know that you took the management part out of it, but it still directly affects them and their schools. And the fact that the teachers who are coaching, if we're doing it on minimum days, they're not going to be available for collaboration or.
They will be doing everything after work hours, is how the game is set up on Wednesdays. It's all after the work hours are completed.
Okay, so they would be still, they'd go to their collaboration meetings and then?
Correct.
Right.
Okay. All right. And they, like I said, one of their concerns was the individual school sites say they've been spending a fortune of their school money for uniforms and things like that. How are we addressing?
Is that a requirement this time around?
It is not a requirement for them to have uniforms. They could use their PE clothes, we can use pennies. In the past, the AFL gave out uniforms. I know in the, years ago, when I was at the site, I did purchase uniforms.
Individual, it's up to the individual site administrator?
Yeah, that would be up to the site administrators. If they had the money and that was in their plan to use that money for uniforms, otherwise that is not a requirement.
Okay. And are there, are we doing that big, like, Super Bowl thing and everything that used to be done?
The, what we will be doing is, the games are on Wednesdays and then the championship game only on the Saturday. We won't have the playoff games on a Saturday and the championship game and all the other stuff to comprise a huge Saturday. What we will have is the playoffs will be during the week and the Saturday will be strictly for a cheerleading exhibition as well as the championship game of that sport.
And are all the coaches, teachers in the district?
At this point in time, I haven't put all coaches in place because it wasn't approved by the board yet. But that's the goal, is to have the staff of Rialto unified.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
You're quite welcome. Any other questions?
What are we saving by bringing the program in-house compared to using the consultants in the past and making the staff work at the same time? We're saving about how much, 37, over 37,000 dollars?
Roughly. And we had coaches in the past that were our staff members as well. We are giving them an incentive by paying them a stipend. Where I've had several calls where parents really want a sports program where they aren't playing, paying the city for a rec league, like, which happens in a lot of places. Kids still have to maintain a 2.0 to be certified, and that's one of the jobs of the sports advisors, is to make sure all kids are ready to go. We also implemented, if I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do it legally and ethically correct. So we did put in courses that have to be required of the coaches before they can start coaching. First aid in health and safety, concussion in sports based on AB 2109, and then a fundamentals of coaching class.
Okay. So that's pretty much what constitutes the cost.
Correct, and transportation. So we're giving the kids more access to the games. Saturdays could be even rough. I know for my family and I, sometimes we're rushing all over the place with my kids' sports activities. So we are allowing access to the sports by transporting them. That is a cost.
And we're paying our own people, right?
We're paying our own people.
So the majority of these monies will cover paying our people to do the.
Yes, it's being right back to our employees, yes.
So the money's staying in-house.
And I know there's a lot of support for the sports program in the community, and I support that. And it sounds like most of the concerns that were brought up to me have been taken away. I think the principals just wish they had been contacted and maybe we could still contact them and.
We serve at your discretion, whatever you need done.
I, I just would like to make a comment. I got a call from a parent, a student and a parent regarding not having, not having, what was it? Not having games, football games. They're not having, they're not, they're not playing right now against, they're practicing, but they're not playing other teams. So they're on hold until we make a decision on whether we want the program to continue or not.
That's correct. We've modified that schedule several times.
So a student and a parent called me and they said, hey, what, what are you, what are you doing? I said, I'm not doing nothing. I'm only one person, you know? But the mother, you know, the mother got on the phone and said, hey, I just want you to know that, that my son is doing better in school because of the sports program. He has to keep his grades up. You know, they've got some family issues, but he says, school, the sports program at the school really helps him focus on, on, on his academics. I just think, you know, maybe, I completely understand, we could use this money for other things. But if we can, according to the FICMA report, if we can, if the district can spend a million dollars unnecessarily on, you know, certain contracts, I don't see why we can't spend 155,000 on our kids. You know, if we can, if we can find monies to pay for all these other things that we're working on correcting and not overspending moving forward, we should be able to come up with this 155,000 for all of our middle school and, you know, our middle school kids because they deserve it.
I agree with you, Mr. Montez, because when, if you have a parent with two or three children, they can't afford to play, play in the league activities in this city. It's just too, it's, it's defeating the purpose of helping the kids get their exercise and everything. If we eliminate this program, we will be destroying a lot of hopes and dreams from a lot of kids. So I agree that we need to keep this program.
And we're making progress. We're saving money that can go back.
I just wanted to.
We're taking control of the program.
I just wanted to bring the concerns I have heard forward. So, but they sound like, Mark, Mark sounds like he has addressed them all, so. I think we're good.
We've worked pretty tirelessly on it. I have to give my secretary some credit too for that.
Have you been muttering my name under your breath?
No, ma'am.
Who's your secretary so we can?
Maria Franco, you can give her some props.
Thank you, Maria.
Board, one thing.
I just wanted to encourage you to continue with this program. It's my opinion.
My, again, the program you received in detail, line by line, how we're going to run the program. It will not be the same program perhaps you were referring to prior years. We're bringing in-house, we're going to close the monitor, we'll do the assessment, how well we're doing. And this all meant for the kid, I honestly believe our kids need sports, you know? And not only our community love sports for the kids, we do too. Again, this is a good investment and from my perspective for students. And we are spending our money and using our own staff. And they know our students. And, and to me, it would be absolutely a better program than what you, you know, in the past years, or how we're running the sports program to the consultant and paying someone, not doing the right thing, you know, they're qualified, they're doing the right thing for the right reason. So. So as, as Mark is referring to, we're doing everything ethically, professionally, and what's best for the kid. So that's our goal.
And you're not obligating, you're not obligating the principals to have to work at this for free, right?
No.
I'd like to point out that, you know, I'm totally in favor of the sports program, but there, in the past, there were a lot of complaints and a lot of issues with it. I wanted to make sure those have all been addressed and we can proceed without any, uh, problems.
Madam President, I'd like to call for the question.
Yes, Mr. Martinez, yes. Oh, you want to offer your support?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to call for the question.
Okay.
We've had discussion and discussion.
All right.
And matter of fact, everybody seems to have given their opinion and we're ready to vote.
I, I just want to say, Board President, if I can, um, I just want to thank Ms. O'Kelly for bringing the concerns forward. I got a lot of those last year too. But it looks like, um, Mr. Islam is doing a good job and Mr. Blind and some of the other people in the district, uh, dealing with those issues, so thank you.
I would like to add that I was the one who suggested bringing it in-house.
Well, you and me both.
Doing it in-house, that's right.
I think we should bring as much things as we can in-house.
Thank you for adding that extra task.
Without extra pay.
Yeah.
All right, we're ready to vote. We're going to pull item K5. So all in favor, may, um, we had a motion and a second.
Correct.
And I am going to abstain from item 7, case 7. So we can all vote with my extension in case 7. So vote by board members, all in favor?
Aye.
And one extension for case 7. Thank you. Is that all right? Now we'll move to comments from Mr. Islam, interim superintendent.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilbert. Um, couple announcement, um, uh, this week, uh, tomorrow, we have a town hall meeting, uh, regarding our Measure Y general obligation bond. Uh, all committee members are invited to come to this meeting. Uh, the, it will be scheduled at 6:00 PM at Carter High School multipurpose room. On September 16th, we have a, another town hall meeting on same issue, uh, at 6:00 PM at Rialto High School, uh, Great Hall. Um, the, the meeting will be, uh, at the Great, Great Hall. Um, we have a September 11th, many of us remember the incidents. September 11th is called Patriot Day. We will respectfully lower the flag, uh, to respect and honor individuals who lost their lives as a result of the terrorist attack on September 11th, 2001. So we all should remember and honor the lives we lost due to that, uh, incidents. And, um, that's, I think, that's all we, I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Islam. We will start with our student board member, Marisol.
Good evening, everyone. So today, Emily wanted to talk about how today, earlier today, I attended myself with many other students. We attended, uh, the DSAC, our first DSAC meeting led by Ms. Joffrey and Mr. Carlos. And I, I spoke with many of the students there and we're all really excited to be a part of this and to kind of get a little insight, a little more insight into the district. We really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Is that it? Thank you, Mrs. O'Kelly.
I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight and, uh, participating in our meeting. And, uh, muchas gracias por venir aquí esta noche. Didn't have too much else for this week because I've been really busy with some other things, but, uh, hopefully, uh, be getting around in the next few weeks. So hopefully I will run into you at some place or another and just have a wonderful night and, um, stay cool.
Thank you, Mr. Montes. You're busy writing.
Yeah, um, thank you, uh, Board President, Ms. Gilbert. First, I'd like to say, uh, good evening and welcome everybody here tonight. Buenas noches, bienvenidos. Um, I, I, um, I just want to thank the board, uh, you know, for, um, approving the, continuing the elementary and middle school sports programs. Um, I have some nephews that play at some of the schools, um, both in elementary and, and middle school and, and I know their parents always look forward to seeing them play, you know, at the Saturday games. Um, and, and like the call I got yesterday from my, my son's friend from their school, asking why haven't they had a game? Um, you know, it's, it means a lot to a lot of, a lot of the kids and, and the community, so thank you. Um, and we're making improvements. The other thing I, I wanted to talk about was, um, uh, I had a visit, I, I, I visited Casey Elementary School, um, for a special reason. Uh, I was challenged. Um, they had a ALS Foundation Ice Bucket Challenge fundraiser, um, August 29th, coincidentally. Um, it was my birthday and they said, um, "Well, we want you to come and, you know, take some buckets, uh, for us if you're willing," because the principal, Mr. Bennett, and the teachers and the staff members over there, um, challenged the kids to fundraise for every dollar. Some, some of the staff members matched the dollar for every dollar that, that the children raised in the classrooms. Um, some just donated, you know, freely, but, um, Mr. Bennett told them, "I will take a bucket of ice water for every hundred dollars you guys raise." Well, these kids went wild and raised all kinds of money. Raised over $700.
Oh, my God.
So the teachers were more than happy to prepare seven buckets of ice water for Mr. Bennett. And of course, I was more than willing to take some, some of that load off and, uh, I only got three. But, but believe me, I, you know, all my family did it. Um, uh, a lot of people challenged me, but once Mr. Bennett and Casey Elementary challenged me, I said, "Man, I gotta do it. What better day to get three buckets of ice cold water on your birthday?" Um, it was, it was, uh, it was over 100 degrees. It was probably like 105 that day. It was super hot. Yeah, the Rialto Record, uh, did a, um, an article on it and, um, me and Mr. Bennett's got his hands wide open like this. And, uh, we're taking buckets there, but I tell you, um, uh, I've never been dashed with a bucket of ice cold water and the first thing that you experience is just like shock.
At my age, you experience a heart attack.
So, um, so, um, you know, um, I understand, um, I guess part of the reason to do the Ice Bucket Challenge is to get a little bit of, of the feeling or a little bit of an idea of what people at the ALS, you know, have to deal with. So, um, I think the, not only are the kids at Casey learning to read and write, but I think it's great that they're learning to give, you know, to, back to, to, uh, the community and, and give to the people who need help. Um, I think that's a lesson that all of our students, um, you know, should learn and, and, and some of us adults. Um, so I want to thank Mr. Bennett.
Although I prefer to just write a check.
Well, I, I donated and I took buckets. But, um, but I want to thank Mr. Bennett again and, um, Ms. Chambers, um, Ms. Vara and, and, and a lot of the other teachers over at, um, Casey Elementary, um, for their involvement with that fundraiser. And, uh, and I want to thank all those kids again. They, they were laughing at us. They had a good time. They, they went over to try to grab ice and throw it at us, but Mr. Bennett didn't let them. The other thing, I, the other thing, the other thing I wanted to talk about was, um, I, I, I think we're making progress. Um, you know, it's, it's, we've been going through a lot recently. Um, uh, I, I think we're, we're, we're making a tremendous amount of progress, um, on the board, uh, in the district. Um, you know, think, we still have a lot of work to do, but I want to thank all of the parents, um, that are parent volunteers. I want to thank all of the parents, um, that attend the board meetings and, um, you know, are, are informing themselves on a lot of the things going on in the district. Um, all of the parents that are engaging, uh, at their school sites and at the district level. Um, we couldn't do it without you, so I thank you. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to, uh, propose to this board is that we look at ways, um, to look for funding, uh, for parents that want, um, to get, go through the parent volunteer process, fill out the paperwork, um, get fingerprinted. The problem is, is that not all the parents have the money, uh, for the, for the charge to get fingerprinted. So, um, as, I mean, what more can we ask that when they're doing it for free? Um, we could at least try to help. Maybe our schools can hold fundraisers, car washes. I mean, it's really hot right now. Um, by the way, Eisenhower Wrestling Team had a, uh, car wash, uh, the other weekend at Eisenhower and they're raising funds and they're having fun washing cars in this heat. Um, I, I don't know, maybe, you know, I know parents like to cook, you know, um, maybe the schools, maybe the district can find grant money or funding, uh, to help, uh, cover some of that cost. Um, I think it, we should at least look at it. Um, and then also the issue of looking into, um, uh, not only parents that want to volunteer inside the schools, but there's a lot of parents that want to volunteer outside the schools too. We have problems with traffic, parking, um, monitoring the children before, uh, school and after school. Um, you know, and, and really looking for ways to, to engage the community, uh, in whatever way they want to help out.
Mr. Montes, if I may give you a quick update on that, uh, topics. Uh, we are engaged. We have, uh, someone here, Myrna Ruiz, she's a part of the committee. We're working on inter-volunteer program guideline. Uh, who should need the fingerprinting, why and how? And the inter-process, we do not have any written process, a guideline established. Every school giving different directions to the parents.
Well, we could do a district-wide policy.
District-wide, that's the way we're working. I'm, I'm leading that committee and, and Myrna is, uh, we already have one meeting. We schedule, uh, another meeting, so we're working together. We're listening to parents' concerns, coming, uh, representing from parents, uh, speaking on that. So we collectively, we're going to have a, establish a guideline for the district-wide. So we are going to follow this and I'm going to present to you, once that prepared collectively and parents are heavily involved on that process. So I, I want to know that this process has already started. So you'll get a complete, uh, report on this and what is the guideline and, and how we're going to continue, uh, improving our parent volunteer for our school. They're not only giving their time, their willingness to help us every day in the school's events. So I not only say thank you to every parent, but I think the process needs to be established. So ensure that parents doesn't have to go through, uh, difficulties and, uh, problem finding money or willing to, uh, serve their time. And we are saying, "You have to go through this" and, and I'm trying to promote that. That's my goal.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Reese, for, uh, your help with that also. Um, and then, uh, last but not least, um, I just, uh, would like to, uh, uh, um, you know, make sure that we remember the lives lost, um, you know, for the tragedy in, uh, in New York, uh, back in 2001.
Patriot Day.
Um, and, um, you know, just keep in mind, regardless of what people believe or don't believe about it, people's lives were lost and a lot of people lost, a lot of family members. Um, and that's, that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montes. Okay, next we will go to Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, President Gilbert. Um, I wanted to thank our communications department and, uh, Mr. Islam. Pick some of these up, English, Spanish, the Rialto Unified School District Bulletin. Um, has two pretty ladies on the front cover here. And, uh, you can't beat that. Um, it is about time that we had something like this. I look forward to it growing. Um, it would be nice to have, I don't think I saw a calendar in it, um, a monthly calendar. That way it would remind parents of Parent Day and Curtis Winton, uh, events coming up, the Parents Summit. All, all these things. Um, I'm one with a pretty busy calendar, so anytime I can get a date, a minimum of a month ahead, but preferably years ahead. Um, when I used to be very involved with CSEA, I'd know that certain weeks of, you know, we had conferences. So I'd just block those out years in advance. As soon as I heard from, uh, San Jose, I, I would say, uh, "Okay, well, I'm going." And, and then I'd ask the wife if it was okay. Um, that wasn't always wise in that order. Um, I encourage everyone who is interested in Measure Y, who has any questions, um, to attend the town hall meetings. Those are at, uh, September 11th and September 16th. And, uh, one is at Carter on the 11th, the other is Rialto High School on the 16th. They are very important because, um, one of the promises this board, well, sections, sections of this board made was to have certain guidelines. But you need to hear why that promise has to be revisited. The, the kids need it, the schools need it. It is timely. Uh, people need work and it would definitely cost more to wait. And if we had to wait, we'd have to wait, um, because of an intricacy. We'd have to wait till 2025 if we didn't do it soon. So you'll get all those answers and if, uh, you can, I'm sure you can come up with many more questions. But that is a forum to, to find out what's going on, to, to voice your opinion and, and so forth. Ask your questions. All the important people who know all those, uh, numbers and answers will be there. Um, the board has been briefed on it and, uh, I support it. I support moving forward for, uh, our community and for our kids as always, and I thank this board. Um, I believe, I don't think I've heard any negative on, on moving forward with it. Um, one last thing. I see this on Twitter and it, uh, it came from, of all people, the CDC, uh, Center for Disease Control and also from FEMA, um, emergency cards. Many times, we forget as parents and guardians to update the student emergency cards. Um, my wife used to work in guidance outside this district. And I can't, can't tell you how many times, uh, in a week, she'd come home and say, you know, "We had this issue again." And basically it says, whoever's not on the emergency card has difficulty picking the student up. Specifically, we are not to release the student. And that comes in when, especially when you have blended families or half-brothers, uh, someone with a different last name in the family who's not on the emergency card trying to pick a student up. So if you have anybody, grandparents who may be picking the student up, take a different piece of paper and add it to the, the emergency card. It's good information and that again, came from the federal government as a reminder. And, uh, it was important enough for me to relay that information to you. Thank you, President Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Ms. Yala.
Well, thank you, President Gilbert, and I'll start with good evening, staff and community. Uh, it was nice to come in from the closed session and just taking a temperature, so to speak, and seeing smiles on the audience faces and the gregarious nature of tonight's meeting. Uh, it's, it's refreshing. Uh, I want to elaborate a little bit on Measure Y because that is important. Uh, you know, we made a commitment and a promise to our community that, uh, uh, we would not raise your taxes or vote on raising those taxes. Uh, and basically what it was, was $60 assessment per $100,000 that was assessed. And that's, that was the limit. And so, all of a sudden, we got blindsided. How do you get blindsided? Well, you have the state who oversees the counties, who oversee, uh, the cities. And the state said, "On these bonds, you no longer can extend them 40 years. If you borrow money, issue out a bond, it is now 25 years." Wait a minute, is that fair? So I'm proposing that maybe we need to get some legal opinion. I know, here we go again. And maybe, uh, have a consortium of neighboring districts and send some representatives up to Sacramento and say, "Hey, we need a grandfather clause here because we owe this to our community." So this is something that maybe- So this is something that maybe we can try to do. And if we can't do that, then you have to give us some guidance as to how you want to move forward. I will say this, the way it's been explained to me, money is cheap right now. What we can do today will be more with less than what we can do later with more money. So it is to our advantage now to take advantage of the lower interest rates. Once they go up and contractors are working, bids go up, the interest rates go up. We've been down that road before. So we have to decide, do we want to cut projects or do we want to implement them? How much would that cost? We have to yet to determine. But if you say no, then maybe the tail end projects don't get completed, but we lived up to our promise. It's not just one person who votes on this, okay? But you need to give us some guidance. And I hope we can find a resolution. Again, maybe we could do it together by sending some representatives up to Sacramento to maybe get us a legal opinion whether or not we were treated fair. I would like to conclude by saying that, again, it's a pleasure working and serving citizens here of Rialto. And we thank you for your support and the issues are being resolved. And the board is working together and we're coming out of the fog. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala.
Board President Gilbert. I realize, I forgot one, 10 seconds, 10 seconds. Mr. Islam, I forgot to mention, I continue to get a lot of emails from teachers. And some teachers have called me. I'm still getting a lot of concerns regarding the DIBELS program. Would it be too much to ask for you guys to poll the teachers? Maybe we can poll them unanimously. And, I mean, I see the data, I got the information, it looks good. But it just doesn't correlate with what a lot of the teachers' concerns are. So if, maybe we can poll the teachers and ask them how they feel about it, get their feedback. You know, and if they're afraid to come forward and give their name, there's a way we can poll them anonymously. Maybe at each school site or something, or maybe a handful of schools. Maybe we don't have to do all 29 schools, I mean, the elementary schools.
Yes, I think we can do that, you know, so we'll take your directions and we'll.
Right.
Isn't this the last year for DIBELS?
No, DIBELS is, sorry. DIBELS is ongoing, it's an assessment tool.
Right.
Not the program. It's the last year for having new directions.
Okay.
With us. But DIBELS is used nationally and used throughout California.
It's free?
Yes.
Yeah. The concerns are the instruction time that it takes away from the teachers having a test or test the kids three times a year, then they put it away and then it's.
That's not necessarily true.
What I'm getting is that it's not useful to a lot of them, that they prefer accelerated reader.
Accelerated reader and DIBELS assess different things. What happens is the data received from DIBELS needs to be valued. Because what happens, if you don't value the data and assess with the assessment, the analysis, what happens is the children who need it the most are the ones where the achievement gap starts to widen. And it starts to get more and more wide as you continue up the grades. To gets to a point where you don't know what to do as an educator anymore with students who are three, four years behind reading their level. And so DIBELS is the assessment, what you do with the data is what makes the difference. And it's a measuring tool.
No, and I understand completely the intention of DIBELS. I just don't understand why so many teachers are upset with it and have so many concerns with it. Maybe some are happy with it, I haven't gotten anyone happy, contact me, but.
I have letters of happy teachers with DIBELS that I can provide for you and I have provided to some members of the board.
No, and I'm glad, and those are not the ones I'm worried about. The ones I'm worried about are the ones that are 20-year, 30-year teachers, 25-year teachers, 15-year teachers that have experience and just feel that the assessment doesn't help them very much. They have other ways of assessing their.
Then knowing exactly where these concerns are coming from, then we can provide the assistance and the additional training or support to see the value and what's done with the data. Some schools have received, done the data and said, this is the part I've never understood, what to do with the data once we get it. And now those teachers, especially in those schools, are really taking off with it. We're not getting those concerns because they see the value in the assessment now and now they know what to do with the data. So part of it is, I would say, at this point, maybe additional training needed or additional awareness or additional support.
Yeah, I mean, if you could poll, if you could poll the teachers, they'll tell you what.
But, Mr. Ayala, the one thing is.
Montez.
I'm sorry, Mr. Montez, I'm sorry. You know, let's look at our parents. Parents who are concerned about their kids being two and three years behind grade level. When they're being told your child is reading two to three years behind grade level. Look at those parents' faces and look at those students' faces. And we cannot say, I'm sorry, I don't administer the appropriate assessment because there's a handful of teachers who don't like it.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how many it is, if it's a handful or if it's more than a handful. I've gotten more than a handful of emails and contacted, but what I just would want, what I would just like as a board member is for you guys to poll the teachers, get their feedback. If the majority of the teachers bring forward concerns that maybe you guys haven't looked at, or maybe there's other assessments or other ways of assessing the students. I just hate the fact that it just seems to be an ongoing issue that many people are having trouble with. I understand the intentions are good. Everyone wants their kids to be proficient readers. We all want to do what's best, but I just don't know if this assessment is part of that or should be part of, you know, part of that. So if you guys could just reach out to them, I mean, if they're reaching out to the board, you know, we could at least respond and hear them out.
Sure.
Mrs. Valenzuela, could you kind of summarize again exactly what DIBELS is assessing? And the importance of it and the growth that we have seen and how many years we've been using DIBELS? And all of a sudden, this year, this whole thing has come up. All of a sudden it's a problem and we've been using it for years without a problem. If I had a child who was severely behind in reading, I would want something that was going to help them. And I know as a former teacher, it's difficult to coordinate those things in the classroom. But there are other ways that you can do it. You can work with another teacher, one of you give the assessment, the other one keep the kids busy. There's a lot of different things you can do. But it doesn't, it isn't just assessing reading, it's, go ahead.
It's an assessment that will actually give you targeted data. If the child is having problems with multi-syllabic, not recognizing how to read that vowel, consonant vowel. If they're not, I mean, there's so various ways of knowing where the student needs to start. So what comes after DIBELS is a program called SIPS. And that tells you, there's 42 lessons and that tells you this child is having problems, let's say with beginning and ending sounds. Then you start in lesson 16. But this other student has multi-syllabic, you know, doesn't understand. So you start at lesson eight. So it's almost an individualized program thereafter. And then you assess the child again and it's done three times a year. And you can assess two kids a day or you could assess one kid or three kids. It depends on how it's planned out. And usually, you know, there's a grace period. And right now is a difficult time because DIBELS has not been used consistently and regularly. But we've had DIBELS here since 2008 and 2009. And then it kind of went on the wayside instructionally. But it continues to be a proven research-based assessment that we continue to use. It never went away, it's just that some sites were not using it at all with some granted permission from higher-level people. And, but it never went away, so schools that didn't do it just didn't do it. But as a standardized assessment, we are bringing it to the district because we need to close that achievement gap. And it has to happen early on, as early as kinder, first and second grade. So, yeah, sure, are there other programs? Perhaps there are, but the district right now is using DIBELS and it has used it since 2008.
Mrs. Valenzuela, I would just like to go along with what you said about the training. Maybe these teachers are resisting it because they are not trained and they feel uncomfortable implementing it and so they put it to the side. So I think that's what we need to target.
Well, we're paying the consultant to provide that training, right?
The consultant is being paid to work with the seven program improvement schools. Now, she is providing, she has provided three days of training of no cost. But we have a plan right now to actually, and actually it's peers, principals, training principals. For the principals at sites who don't have these issues, they're doing something right. They're doing a lot of things right, especially when it comes to early, DIBELS is dynamic indicators of base, of early basic learning skill, reading skills. And so we're going to have principals training principals, those who are successful at their sites, to train those schools who have not had that support. But it's a peer training, peer program. Because a lot of times it's a lot more valuable to hear it from your peers. And then we're also training all of our professional staff development instructional strategists at the Professional Development Center. So that they can continue offering ongoing trainings and not rely on the consultant. We need to equip our own people is what the plan is. So that consultant who's been very helpful is going to be phased out at this point, after this year. But in the meantime, the consultant continues to work with the seven improvement schools. They're improvements, PI schools for a reason. And so they need a lot of help. So, and they've been receiving the help and they've actually shown quite a bit of progress. For example, at Boyd Elementary School last year, according to the DIBELS assessment, almost 100% of our first graders after being assessed demonstrated needing some kind of intervention, right? So in doing the right type of instructional needs and targeting those needs, this year those kinders who are now first graders came out 50% of our kids needing some kind of intervention versus close to 100%. And that's just one site that I can quote you that data right now. But that's similar happenings, you know, across those program improvement schools. So like I said, this is a challenging year, as a matter of fact, this is a very transitional year in many, many ways and forms, including common core, including our parent portal, including knowing how to use Sanergy and getting the bugs out of Sanergy. Including, oh gosh, what else did we come up with Ed? We came up with 33 new initiatives at this time.
That's awesome and we're all perfectly aware of our district's needs and our district's, you know, the direction we want to go.
But by all means, we will do the survey that you're requesting because we want to be transparent.
Yeah, I didn't mean to open up a can of worms, I'm sorry about that. But, you know, if you could just get their feedback from the teachers, that's all I ask.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, board. We will not only survey, we'll invite teachers, perhaps those need of training, as Jasmine is referring to, peer training. We will poll teachers perhaps not comfortable because they need more training. So I think we'll explore all the options to resolve that issue and we'll move in that direction.
And Mr. Montez, one more thing, we can also share the results from the STAR reading test, especially for the ninth grade. I get a lot of calls from parents as to what to do when kids come to high school and they don't know how to read. So I think it'll be important for you to see those results, especially at the ninth grade, how many kids are coming in.
Oh, I'm very, I'm very aware of the need for us to do overhaul our education efforts or academic efforts, I'm very aware. I mean, you know, 15%, you know, what is it, 9% of our kids completing the A through G requirements to go to college? I mean, we can go on and on and on, we've got a lot of work to do. All I'm saying is if teachers are going out of their way to reach out to board members regarding certain assessments, I mean, I don't know, I just don't think testing all the time, testing so much is going to always help us, you know? But that's for our teachers who are the ones that we entrust to educate the children in the classroom. That's for them to decide and for them to work together with the district.
Thank you, Mr. Montez. And I'd just like to say, I don't know how many board members have been approached with this, just you?
Well, we were all CC'd in some emails.
Yeah. But has, I thought when we voted that we will continue this, has that been continuing? Are you still getting messages?
I am, emails, I am, I've gotten a couple more. Since the last two or three emails, we all got together.
I know there were certain schools that were sending emails. It was just a designated school where the teachers were not, were resistant to DIBELS. It wasn't across the board.
No.
No, it wasn't across the board.
Yeah, excuse me, and if it would be helpful to know, not so much for anything, pointing fingers or anything, but so that we know where the targeted assistance can happen. Just like intervention we do, you know, when someone needs help. Because without knowing the targeted assistance, how can we help if we can't identify where that targeted assistance is? So it's helpful to know where it's coming from so that we can provide the support or find out ourselves what the concerns directly are. Otherwise it's just a here's, I mean, it's a general statement and generalities, you know, make it difficult to know where to help and give that support.
Thank you, Ms. Valenzuela. And Mohammed, we will work on that.
And we'll report back to you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now for my comments, first of all, I've said hello to everyone anyway, but hello again. And every year, we get the privilege of having our boardroom decorated. And I always try to remember to acknowledge the schools that take the time to come here and do the bulletin boards for us. And this month is COPE, so I want to thank COPE Middle School for the beautiful board work that they have presented to the boardroom. And we forget sometimes, we go to, we come and the boards are so pretty and then no one acknowledges it. So I'm going to start the year off by acknowledging COPE and let us remember that each month a different school comes to do this and we need to acknowledge that. And again, I want to acknowledge the Rialto Unified School District Bulletin that our information office has provided with us. And I heard her tease Bo about, look out, son. Rialto has their own newspaper now, so watch out.
And it's available in Spanish.
And it's available in Spanish and English. And so, and so we just want to thank, oh, there she is back there and her staff for taking the initiative to do this.
May I apologize, Ms. Gilbert, I want to acknowledge Mrs. Saidah Jeffrey, who is our reporter. So she put together and I thank her, her worked hard on this. And this is the first publication, it will be quarterly. And so I thank her and her staff to lead in that direction. And to be Rialto Unified School District, everything goes in our districts. As many community members don't see it, this will be presented to our community and staff, everybody else. So I thank Saidah and her staff put together this and I thank her doing all this work.
And she's only going to report good news. Thank you. And I would just like to acknowledge, to thank Mr. Islam also. A couple of board meetings back when school first started, there was an issue about safety and traffic at Werner Elementary. And he informed me that that issue has been taken care of. So we want to thank you, Mr. Islam, for taking, making sure that our children are safe and the traffic pattern has been changed and that we're, you know, moving forward. And anytime there are safety issues around our schools, this is the. And anytime there are safety issues around our schools, this is the place because board members don't always see what's going on, especially when kids are going back and forth to school, that we need to come and let us know so we can make sure that we can resolve those issues. That's very important. Our student safety is very important and we want to make sure that we have no traffic fatalities or anything like that because of unconcerned people who are out in the street going to and from work and not paying attention to our children. So we want to thank you again, Mohammed, for that. And tomorrow is Patriot Day. Mr. Montes mentioned it. And we all remember 9/11. If you are past, what, 11 years old, you should remember it. But anyway, just take a moment of time to just think about where our country is and what's going on in our country today. We're living in a very troubled time and we have to be mindful of everything that's around us just to be safe, making sure our families are safe and our children are safe. And with that, that's my closing comments for the evening. And we're getting out of here before nine o'clock. May I have a motion? Yes.
Could I make a motion that we close?
In honor of Patriot Day?
9/11, yes.
9/11? Yes, you may. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we close the meeting in memory of Patriots' Day and all, all the families that got affected, all the people that were lost.
Thank you. Second. It's been moved in second, that we will adjourn this meeting in honor of Patriot Day in memory of all the families that lost relatives in 9/11. All in favor to this motion?
Aye.
Motion is carried. We adjourn at 8:38. Have a good evening. Thank you.